Hello and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council's Standing Committees Meeting for Wednesday, March 4th, 2020. My name is Kim Clark-Baskin and I am the Assistant City Clerk. With us today, we have our Sign Language Interpreter, Dan Dever. The following is a list of legislation up for preliminary approval by Pittsburgh City Council. Finance and Law Committee, Mr. Lavelle is the Chair, we have Bill Number 22. Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code Title II Fiscal Article VII Business Related Taxes, Chapter 241 Amusement Tax, Section 241.01, Definitions to Update the Language in the City Code. Bill Number 121. Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code Title I Administrative Article VII Procedures, Section, Chapter 161.22, Debarment from Bidding on and Participating in City Contracts in Order to Change the Requirement of an Affidavit to be a Certification Which Will Simplify the Contracting Process and Reduce Costs to Our Suppliers by No Longer Requiring the Document to be Notarized. Bill Number 142. Resolution Providing for Professional Services Agreement and/or Contract with Compass Natural Gas Partners LP for the Lease of a Compressed Natural Gas Fueling System and Provision of Fuel for the Payment Thereof at a Cost Not to Exceed $378,000. Bill Number 143. Resolution Amending Resolution 837 of 2017 entitled Authorizing and Directing the City Controller to Create a Special Trust Fund to be Designated as the Shinley Park Rank Trust Fund for the Purpose of Depositing Funds and Expenditures of Funds for Any and All Related Expenses to Authorize the Department of Parks and Recreation to Utilize Said Trust Public Safety Services Committee, Mr. O'Connor is the Chair, we have Bill Number 144. Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Safety to Enter on Behalf of the City of Pittsburgh into an Agreement with Bucks County Community College for Hazardous Materials, Safety Officer Training, and Certification Services at a Cost Not to Exceed $9,000. Bill Number 145. Ordinance Amending Ordinance Number 36 of 2019 Amending and Supplementing the Pittsburgh Code Title VI Conduct Article III Dogs, Cats, and Other Animals by Repealing Chapter 639 Crocodilians and Venomous Snakes in Its Entirety and Adding a New Chapter 639 Crocodilian Species and Red-Eared Sliders prohibiting the Keeping, Sale, Exchange, Adoption, or Transfer of Such Animals in the City of Pittsburgh. Bill Number 146. Ordinance Supplementing Ordinance Number 36 of 2015 Relative to the Pittsburgh Code Title VI Conduct Article III Dogs, Cats, and Other Animals, Section, Chapter 636 Wild Animals, Section 636.06 prohibiting the Capture and Harm of Any Wild Birds to Prohibit the Sale of Native or Indigenous Birds to Eliminate any Permit or License Allowing Individuals to Trap Wild Birds. Public Works Committee, Mr. Coghill is the Chair, we have Bill Number 139. Resolution Amending Resolution 510 of 2019 entitled Resolution Providing for Contract or Use of Existing Contracts or Agreements and Providing for the Planning, Design, Repairs, Maintenance, Improvements, and Emergencies with the Production of the Oakland Transportation Study and Associated Projects to Provide for a Specific Payee and Authorize Entering into a Contract for the Oakland Transportation Study. Bill Number 140. Resolution Amending Resolution 336 of 2019 entitled Resolution Providing for Contract or Use of Existing Contracts and/or Agreements and Providing for the Planning, Design, Repairs, and Maintenance in Connection with the Production of the Hill District Mobility Network and Parking Management Plan and Associated Projects to Provide for a Specific Payee and Authorize Entering into a Contract for the Hill District Transportation Study. Intergovernmental Affairs Committee, Ms. Gross is the Chair, we have Bill Number 19. Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for the District 15 Beta Development at 1465 Smallman Street. Bill Number 109. Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan where the Town Homes on Fifth Avenue Project Located on Tax Map in Pittsburgh. And Bill Number 141. Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for the 2926 Smallman Street Land Development Project Located at 2920 and 2930 Smallman Street. That concludes the reading of the Legislation Up for Preliminary Approval. Thank you and have a wonderful day.
Good morning and welcome to the Standing Committee Meeting for Wednesday, March 4th, 2020. Our First Order of Business is Public Comment. Anyone wishing to comment before City Council has three minutes to speak. Please give your name and neighborhood for the record. The green light will indicate the start of your three minutes. The yellow light comes on, you have one minute to summarize, and the red light comes on you at the end of your time. Would the First Speaker please come forward? Would the First Speaker please come forward?
Dr. Ronaldan Miller, Homewood, Global Intelligence Society Candidate for President 2020, globalintelligencesociety.org. Citizens, Mr. Kraus is not present in the room, nor is Ms. Gross, nor Mr. Burgess. Well, who comes to Ms. Gross? These individuals are a target of my lawsuits pending against the city for abuse of public comment. So, do they have the guts to be here, I wonder? An ultra-concern of Pittsburgh City Council is or should be biosafety. Do the offices of Council and Mayor, OCM, is there information and intelligence at the highest level? And I don't think so. The Center for Global Studies, International Interdisciplinary, and the Global Intelligence Society, which I have founded, I think do, offer a very high value to the public. You're welcome to our information and also welcome to visit the Module Library on 40 Bell Silver Avenue. Just give me a call, give us a call, and we'll put you in. Are coronaviruses using the plasma membrane to acquire parasitically, acquire the genetic code that they need to reproduce? Or are they nucleus-focused? Most coronaviruses are the former, but this new virus may not be. It may be a combination of these two, and therefore may be more potent. Have the OCM enlightened the Pittsburgh public regarding the existence of a biosafety lab in Oakland? The answer is no. This is so much of a contrast with what has happened in Boston-Cambridge, where there were public hearings about whether to install the BSL there and what the conditions were and what the consequences may be. That was not done here. I have persistently, before this council, raised this as a question. Is the Oakland BSL airtight? The answer is no. Is there possible variant pathogen escape? The answer is yes. The OCM, the offices of Council and Mayor, have offered no information or intelligence on this. There's zero, whereas I am offering something which I think is constructive via the GIS and the GIIIN. Is it possible for viruses there, the NCOV is one of them, to be weaponized? And the answer to that is that it's possible, yet the OCM says nothing about this. Is the United States of America and China, and China, together or separately? I think they're together on this, signatories of the 1974 Bio-Weapons Convention? The answer is yes. And the 1984 revision? That's a good thing.
Next speaker, please.
My name is Yvonne F. Brown. I'm from the Hill District. You know, maybe because I am a speaker and been coming for years, I feel differently than what the people you bring in and you give them their accolades and they get them and they leave. They never let stay to hear what the people say. I think we should be before all of you, the people should be here, we should be able to speak. Just like, I'll bring it up about the park. You made that little park up at the top of the hill. August, is it August Wilson's little park up there behind Granville? And I think you made that park, you didn't have a child then, because you didn't look to see. It's on the top of the hill, there's no fence. A baby could go running and you know how if a ball go, they'll go behind it. I know that. That baby can go down the hill. There's no fence or nothing. I said that before. So when, especially him, Anthony, keep on, Call Hill, keep on talking about that all the parks should be even, or we should all get the same amount, not when we don't have one. That park right there is unsafe for the children. When we had one on center, you had that one cop, you remember he came and was chasing old black men who are dead now. They were dead. They were suffering, old men in their 70s and stuff, threatening to knock them in the head and siccing their dog, the police dog on the men. I told you then. When we talk about, Burgess is talking about nasty hateful things about employees, but Burgess is one of the ones that's so nasty, the things that he does, because I'm telling you that I didn't believe, and I want people to understand what I was saying about him and that woman. He's a professor at one of the colleges, community college. They said the dumbest woman, and these are activists, black women talking about the dumb black woman that got a straight A from him. That's what they said. They believed that he had sexual encounters, and I'll say it again, and I mean it. If you did it, you did it. If you didn't, you didn't. But you act like you did anytime you took and tried to stop me from being able to speak. He changed the time from 12 o'clock in the afternoon till 10:30 that we had to sign up. I came in, they were having, still having the early meeting from 9:30, still 10:30 having that meeting, but I couldn't sign up because he is very busy. That's when I told Mary Beth, scared her. I said, "I'm gonna sue you if you don't let me speak." "Okay, well, you can speak this time." I said, "What about the rest of the people? And Mr. Burgess, I'm on you because of the things that you have said and you stopped me from being able to use my civil rights, freedom of speech, freedom of thought, freedom of expression, when you tell me I can't talk to her, but she can overtalk me. I got three minutes." That's what I'm talking about. You give us three minutes, but then I can't talk because she can overtalk her and Carville, both of them. Both of them deny me and my rights to be able to be heard. I speak for many. I come down, they tell me to come down. I tell them to please come, because they're tired of me.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning, Councilmembers. My name is Bob Carroll. I live at 3172 Beechwood Boulevard in Squirrel Hill. I'm having a problem with environmental services. I live on a private street and it sits above Beechwood Boulevard. And when the recyclable truck compactor comes up, backs up, gouges the driveway, it's been going on for years. I've called 311 about it. I talked to Mr. O'Connor's Chief of Staff. He came out, took pictures of it, called 311 again, and that was back in September. Nothing's been done about it. What they used to do was have a pickup truck, and it's still in use now, to pick up the regular trash. He would turn around, come back, pick up the recyclables. And all I'm asking is for the truck to come back, the little pickup truck, instead of using this big compactor to pick up the recyclables, and it's damaging the street all the time. Now I have a video here, if I can submit it.
Submit it to the clerk.
That's all I'm asking, just for the little pickup truck to pick up the recyclables instead of the blue compactor. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Are there any further speakers? Seeing none, we will now move on to our Standing Committee Agenda. Would the clerk please take the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Here.
Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Mrs. Gross.
Mr. Kraus.
Excuse me, here.
Here.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
And Mr. Lavelle.
Here.
Eight members present.
Our first committee of the day is Finance and Law, chaired by myself. We have supplemental papers. First bill is 161.
Bill 161, Resolution Authorizing the City to Enter into an Agreement with PNC Bank to Grant a License to the PNC National Association to Enter into Certain Parcels in Order to Perform Certain Work Including Geotechnical and Environmental Surveys, Site and Topographic Surveys, Utility Assessments, Engineering, and Evaluation.
Please have a motion.
Motion to approve.
Quick discussion, just so members may be aware, we're looking to actually build a homeless shelter on a city lot down by the, up right up from the courthouse before you get to the jail. This is, PNC has graciously essentially agreed to lead the fundraising effort for this, and they're gonna also put a substantial amount of money into this effort. This is to allow them on the site to make sure that the lot we're anticipating can actually withstand building the actual shelter. So this is an agreement to allow them to do some surveying on the site.
Counselwoman.
That's a wonderful project. Thank you so much. So just to be clear, this is just an easement for access, but it's no ownership stake.
Correct.
There's no percentage of ownership. Thank you.
Any counsel?
No, I just wanted to thank PNC, and I know Tommy Lamb is here. I don't know if anybody had any questions for him, but I want to thank them for doing this. It's a great, great cause.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The bill is passed. Bill 162.
Bill 162. The mayor is hereby authorized to issue and the city controller to countersign three warrants in a total sum of $19,000 made payable to Erman Busina in full satisfaction of all claims, including but not limited to claims for all alleged lost compensation and in full satisfaction of all other claims as final settlement related to the action filed with the Pittsburgh Commission on Human Relations.
We need a motion to hold for executive session?
The move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is held for executive session. Under deferred papers, Bill 22.
Bill 22. Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code Title II Fiscal Article VII Business Related Taxes Amusement Tax, Definitions to Update Language in the City Code.
Forgive me. Motion to approve, very brief discussion. Amusement tax, correct?
Second.
Amusement tax?
Yes.
Yeah, good, thank you. So I just want to thank everybody for their patience, and I apologize for my disorder this morning. I was away for the last five days and just got back into town. But we do have amendments, and people worked very, very hard to bring them to completion. I just didn't have a chance to prepare them for today's meeting. I'd like to preliminarily vote as is. I'll bring those amendments to the table on Tuesday for the final vote. Sounds good. Thank you. Any further discussion?
Yeah, has there been a working group with this?
I'm sorry?
Has there been a working group with this?
Extensive.
Okay. Yeah, I just haven't been contacted by them.
You were invited from the very beginning at this table, as a matter of fact. Okay. Opened it up to anybody who wished to participate. Come. Wilson? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is passed. Bill 120.
Bill 120. Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code Title I Administrative Article VII Procedures, Chapter 161 Contracts to Clarify Definitions of Contract Types, Correct Conflicting Language Between Commodities and Professional Services, and Add Additional Categories for Requests to Waiver the Competitive Bidding Requirements to Be In Line with Current Practice and National Standards.
Now please have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
With discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is passed. Bill 121.
121. Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code Title I Administrative Article VII Procedures, Chapter 161.22 Debarment from Bidding on and Participating in City Contracts in Order to Change the Requirement of an Affidavit to be a Certification Which Will Simplify the Contracting Process and Reduce Costs to Our Suppliers by No Longer Requiring the Documents to be Notarized.
Motion?
Motion to approve, discussion?
Second.
So, these are the, this is the article that I, or the bill that I held, because I was looking for briefing, which has been scheduled by the clerk's office, but not until after final vote next week. So, I understand that other members don't have concerns, and I'm really going to be asking questions, I think, about the, not just this bill, but about the kind of cumulative changes that we've been making, kind of now, over the last two years to Chapter 161. And I just want to remind the table and the public that Councilman Lavelle and Councilman Burgess were specifically encouraging OMB to bring us information about minority and women-owned businesses and other kinds of businesses, and we still don't see those in our bills. So, I'm gonna be asking those questions and a variety of other ones. So I'll just abstain on this particular bill today. I will be getting some time, I think it's already scheduled for all members, a briefing with OMB, which again, is for myself, just kind of broadly, about procurement and like the sets of amendments that we've had over the last year or two. So I'll just abstain today and just remind members that there's a briefing next week.
Thank you. Any other members? So real, very briefly, just so everyone's aware, this is simply removing the word affidavit, which will allow the contractors to go through the e-verification process, so it actually saves time and saves money for our small contractors who are trying to get business with the city. Any other conversations? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Abstain.
One abstention?
The note it.
The bill is passed. Any opposed? Sorry. Bill passes. Bill 128.
Bill 128. Resolution Authorizing the Issuing of Three Warrants for the Total Sum of $70,000 Relating to the Settlement of a Lawsuit Filed in the United States District Court for the Western District of Pennsylvania.
Motion, I need a motion to hold for executive session?
The move.
No, sorry, I'm part, executive session was held. Need a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any conversation? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is passed. Under new papers, Bill 142.
Bill 142. Resolution Providing for a Professional Services Agreement with Compass Natural Gas Partners LP for the Lease of a Compressed Natural Gas Fueling System and Provision of the Fuel for the Payment Thereof at a Cost Not to Exceed $378,000.
Need a motion?
To approve discussion?
Second. Counselwoman Gross?
Thank you. So I've read the text file on this, but I still need a little, I'm confused about what it is and what kind of projects it relates to.
So we're actually going to be leasing a compressed natural gas fueling system. Currently, the current system is, I believe in Councilwoman Smith's district, but our vehicles have to travel back and forth every single day, so they want to lease one to put into actually your district, into the strip district, which is more convenient for all the vehicles that are traveling less mileage and able to use more fuel, travel further to use more fuel.
So do we know kind of what the, yeah, any more details about the costs and benefits of, are we gonna be spending more money than we are now? If, you know, or, I mean, just kind of like, it would be nice to see that, that kind of detail.
It'll actually be a cost-saving measure. We do have someone who can speak to it if you would like.
Timmy, may I? Thank you all. You can just identify yourselves. And again, if you could frame for us, kind of like, well, we're consuming this much natural gas fuel in our vehicles now, if we spend this much money on this compressor, then it will allow us to, you know, are we gonna be increasing the amount of compressed natural gas fuel that we'll be consuming and what that is, and kind of frame the cost benefits for us?
Kevin Paulus, Director of Office Management and Budget.
Jennifer Olzinger, Assistant Director, OMB.
Mike Gable, Director of Public Works.
So like Councilman Lavelle stated, I don't know if we have the exact measures of how much we would save, but just in time alone and the convenience factor for all of the vehicles.
Well, we don't want to hear that we're spending, you know, five times as much in fuel and saving a little bit in time, because it may not work out very well.
Right, so it will save time.
But we also want to save the money on the fuel costs, right?
Right, and currently, we have to travel to the Fairwood-Crafton area to fuel up in the morning anyway for all of these vehicles, because that's the only available site for us. And as, you know, if anyone's familiar with the LA, the current vehicles that we have are old, cost a lot of money to repair and run on diesel. So as we move through with the 2020 ELA plan and the 2021 and 2022 plans, we are going to be purchasing more CNG vehicles, or packers. So operationally, this makes sense to put them closer to where the vehicles are housed, so that they can fuel up in the morning, save time, and get on with their routes to collect the refuse that's needed.
So maybe you just need to remind us why our ELA plan has the increase in the compressed natural gas.
And I wanted to also address your question on the cost of the fuel. Right now, and when we're driving over to Crafton area to get that, we are paying retail. So right now, we will be getting a highly discounted price to on...
How much of a discount?
I believe it's close to a dollar a gallon. I'd have to get you the exact numbers.
I have no idea. I mean, I don't put compressed natural gas in my car, right? So is it like $50 a gallon, and now it's gonna be $49 a gallon, or it's $2 a gallon, and now it's only gonna be $1 a gallon? So are we saving like 50%? Are we saving 1%?
Yeah, I believe it's equivalent to about a dollar a gallon. They don't measure them in gallons.
Yeah, we don't know what that means. Like a dollar a gallon, again, could be a 10% discount or it could be a 50% discount.
We could follow up with you to get you the cost of what we currently pay and the cost of what we would be paying.
Everybody else just thinks that this is a great plan and we don't know why? Okay. Okay, I'm gonna defer to President Smith. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to know what happens. Are we still gonna utilize the one in Fairwood? It's in Fairwood in the city of Pittsburgh, not in Crafton, but are we gonna utilize the one at all in Fairwood? Because I'm curious what's gonna happen with that one now.
Well, that one, we don't own, so we pay retail for that. So if it's easier to access...
It's owned by Giant Eagle, correct? Yes, it's owned by Giant Eagle.
Correct.
Who's a great city of Pittsburgh company, but just go ahead.
If it's easier to access the one closer to the department or the Bureau of ES, I would anticipate us using that one slightly more.
And who owns that one? The one that you're saying?
The one that we're, we are going to lease equipment.
You're going to lease?
Yes. So we're not installing the Compass Natural Gas Partners.
And where are they located? Just there and where else? Here in Pennsylvania, closer to the other side of the state. Close to the other side, so not a Pittsburgh company, but, okay. Pennsylvania company, yeah. I'm gonna abstain today.
All right, I'll take a second round if no one else wants to...
Further discussion for first round, Counselwoman.
How many of our vehicles currently run on CNG? Eight, right, Director? We just got four new ones.
I think there's eight refuse vehicles that are CNG.
And we have four more on order.
Yeah, we have four more on order for the 2020 plan, and we just submitted grant applications for four more in 2021 and four more in 2022. Currently, the four that are under the ELA plan are in a grant. The grant will cover 25% of the vehicle cost, so essentially, at the end of the day, we would have four vehicles for the cost of three.
So, to explain that, so in terms of efficiencies, we're very limited as to where we can put those CNG vehicles. So we can't send them to Wilkinsburg with having to come back and fill up at Fairwood-Crafton, and I think there's also one at Southside. Those are the two locations that we use.
Both in district, too.
So having this down at the 29th facility with the other fuel where Environmental Services is, is gonna be much more efficient. But right now, we're very limited as to where we can send those. But right now, we're very limited as to where we can send those vehicles.
And that's, that's out of how many Environmental Services vehicles or refuse vehicles? Roughly? Just to get a sense of scale.
Of, what, 35? We have, I think, at least 50, 60 vehicles, I believe. There's like 35 refuse routes and 15 recycling routes, and there's, there are some extra vehicles.
So, this, as you're scheduling vehicles out and about, you can, you know, be more flexible in terms of where you're sending them, I get that. I'm interested in the cost, too. I want to get those answers. I'm also interested in the, in the actual emissions of this. So, is it, is it that there just aren't the equivalent of electric vehicles, I guess, for refuse vehicles? And this is the best we can do in terms of carbon emission reductions, other emission reductions? I'll just note, this is a step in the right direction, knowing that it's previously diesel and moving to this, and, you know, even low emissions vehicles still emit more than, than CNG, compressed natural gas. I'll just note that although the tailpipe emissions might be cleaner, the process to actually extract and to transport compressed natural gas can result in, and mostly does result in leaks of natural gas and methane that are way, way more potent than carbon dioxide, so can actually not be as, you know, as environmentally friendly as we think it is. But given that we don't actually have an option of like the equivalent of an electric vehicle or hybrid electric vehicle for our refuse trucks, I, I'm glad that this is going in the right direction. Would also like answers to the, to the budgetary questions, but that was the question I had.
I believe that they are, in the next, probably about three years, it sounds like there will be a lot of electric option for garbage trucks.
Here. They are in development for our understanding, so they're saying about the years. Do you have a sense of how much more expensive those might be over traditional vehicles or CNG vehicles? Okay.
From everything that we've gaged, any electric, electric packer is overseas currently, so.
Thank you.
Sorry, Councilman Wilson, then Councilman Cross. Hello. And I know you mentioned that there was a cost savings of a dollar, and you're going to get back to us on that. Why is there that cost savings again?
Because where we currently purchase the fuel from is retail. With the lease, we get the option, or the, the benefit of a lower price.
We also pay the tax, too, so we won't pay tax on it anymore as well.
So, I appreciate you'll get back to us, but I've been passing the, the one, if we're talking about compressed natural gas, the one in the strip district, it's like, you know, close to the river there. And I was all, you know, before I knew what it was, I was like, oh, look at this, it's cheap gas, but you can't get it. And so, I figured it was like a low cost. So, I know this isn't a Google-free session, so I looked it up, and it said the average, the average cost was $227 yesterday. So, if we're saving a dollar on $227, that's incredible. So, I'm looking forward to the, you know, to what you get back to us. Thanks.
Certainly.
Just briefly, so the desire is to continue to move into, to natural gas packers for the future, that's...
Until a more viable option is available, yes.
So, this is more of an investment to protect what we wish to continue to do in the future. Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion for first round? Seeing none, second round, Councilwoman Gross?
Given that we just heard that electric vehicles are coming online in maybe three years, it seems like a very short-term Band-Aid fix, not a long-term investment. I really am skeptical that it's going to be a worthwhile, long-term investment until we see more numbers. Like, I really want to, to, like, you to put this in front of us, right? I mean, I think that's fair. If we're talking about switching the fleet, maybe it seemed like a really great idea three years ago when we talked about this, right? And maybe it doesn't seem like it's such a good idea right now, that we're talking about having only eight of our 60 vehicles right now on compressed natural gas, that's what I understood, right? And then, you know, maybe four more next year. So, it's a 50% savings, but on how much? Are we going to spend $385,000? I'm going to just say out loud that I'm wearing glasses that are like 10 years old, and I can't read a dang thing. Is that what it says? $378,000?
$378 over three years.
Over three years. And if we're saving half the fuel cost on eight vehicles, is that like $15,000 a year? You know what I'm saying? So, are we going to spend nearly $400,000 to save $40,000? I'm just making numbers up because I don't have any numbers in front of me.
So, I will say that our, our ES fleet is very, very old and costs a lot of money for repairs.
And I also want to say, I'm going to interrupt you to say, no one loves our current diesel refuse vehicles. Not our residents, not our constituents, not us, not you, I'm sure not the employees that are driving them around. Thank you very much to our Environmental Services employees. Nobody loves those trucks, I don't think, right? Okay, so we can all acknowledge that, and that they're, they are really terrible for the amount of carbon. Is it carbon away? Is the actual thing, the particles, the, the, I'm, I'm losing my vocabulary from our, thank, from our clean air post agendas. Yeah, thank you.
But yes, our ES fleet is very old, so we, we are going to buy four more, so that number will go from eight to 12 this year. And we have, like I said, we have grants to purchase four more in each of the next two years. So, it's not just fuel savings, though. It, it will be the cost of repairs alone, because with the age of the fleet that we currently have, it is so expensive to, to keep those vehicles on the road with the maintenance. So, as we move forward with the new CNG trucks, we will, we would expect to see a reduction in the actual repair cost as well.
I, I, I mean, I think we all have the same goals, but I want you to make a better case. So, if you could do that before Tuesday, I would appreciate it. If other members are supportive, that's fine, I'm not going to vote for this today. But I really want you to make that case, so we can all feel good about it.
We'll be happy to follow up.
Councilwoman Smith?
I just, briefly, you mentioned something, that we get something from out of the country. What was that? I couldn't hear.
They asked about the electric packers. And currently, right now, there, there are options for electric packers overseas that are not stateside yet, so it's something that we're continuing to monitor to see if that is a viable option and when that will be able, when that will be available to us.
Okay. I'm going to abstain today, I'd like to talk with you a little bit more about it, and I know you're going to get sent some information, and so then we'll see. And if next week we're not comfortable, then I guess we could recommend if other members feel the same. But right today, I'm going to abstain.
Councilman Wilson?
That's my question, I was just going to ask about the electric compactors.
Councilman Cross?
Just a brief point. So, it seems to me that an electrically operated packer would take one heck of a battery to, to make it an efficient vehicle, right? So, it seems to me, and I'm wondering, I'm wondering if...
There are a lot of newer ones.
No, I'm just, I'm wondering if you can a-answer this at this time. Do, do they tend to be hybrids, where they are both electric and, like a Prius? Are they both electric and natural gas? There's a combination of both that one turns on, one turns off as the need demands? Do you know?
Considered and development are fully electric.
Excuse me, thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any abstentions? Councilwoman?
Abstain.
Councilwoman? Any opposed? Bill passes. Thank you. Bill 143.
Bill 143, Resolution Amending Resolution 837, Which Authorizes and Direct the City Controller to Create a Special Trust Fund to be Designated as a Schenley Park Rink Trust Fund for the Purpose of Depositing Funds and Expenditures of Fund for Any and All Related Expenses to Authorize the Department of Parks and Recreation to Utilize the Trust Fund.
Need a motion? Um, motion to approve with discussion? Councilman Cross?
Um, I'm going to defer, the rink's in your, your district, but I think members do have some questions about this.
I can give a brief explanation. So, this trust fund was actually transferred from Parks and Recs to the Department of Public Works in 2017. This simply allows Parks and Recs to assume all responsibilities of the trust fund.
Okay, then I'll bite. I have, why wouldn't that have just simply happened when we transferred it?
It, it was previously, it was previously under the Department of Parks and Rec, and it moved to the, the Department of Public Works in 2017. So, this legislation, we move it back so that Parks and Rec has the authorization for the expenditures to assume the full responsibility of the trust fund.
And I guess then the obvious question is, why? What, what necessitated the need to move it back into Parks and Rec?
I, I think that, I was just coming into parks, I think, when it was being transferred to the Public Works Department, but it's not unlike an aquatics program that we have at Oliver Bathhouse. Excuse me, good morning, Council, Ross Chapman, Director of Parks and Rec. So, it's like any like program that we have in, within city parks, this just pulls in that operational end back into the park so we can program it and facilitate programming like we do elsewhere, and it allows us, I guess, the logical thing is that the trust fund chases that or follows that. So, it's returning to parks where I think it had resided maybe since its inception.
So, the, the initial focus of having it in DPW was more maintenance-oriented, but having it back in parks is more programming-oriented.
I think so. I mean, like every facility, I, we're probably in 50-plus facilities during the summer season, people everywhere, so the relationship that we have with Director Gable and Assistant Director Hornstein's team is pretty, there's a lot of synergy there, there's a lot of dependency there. So, like any other facility, we'll work with them on anything maintenance-related, we'll just assume operations of the, the rink programming.
Great, thanks, appreciate your help.
You're welcome, Kelson.
Yes. So, it was probably in Public Works for the construction, is that most of the reason why?
Yeah, I think, yes, I think 18 and 19, and all of 19, it was in Public Works. It still is.
Sorry, so do we, is there another, I know there's a Frick Trust, is there another Schenley Trust besides this one?
Not that I'm aware of, Counsel.
Schenley doesn't have one, but Frick has the other one. Okay.
Schenley Park Trust Fund, there is a Schenley Park Trust Fund, there's a Frick Park Trust Fund, separate trust fund.
Separate, okay.
Correct.
So, we're just separating this, okay. So, for this, now do the workers at the rink now report back to you?
That, that would be correct.
Opposed to DPW now?
Anybody that would be associated with the rink operation specifically would...
Now fall back under Parks and Rec?
Yeah, so that would...
So, two years ago when we switched?
That's correct, Counsel.
We're going back, okay.
That's correct.
That's all the questions I have about this, so.
Thank you. So, I'm just going to point out, like I did when we were talking about the Melon Park Tennis Bubble Trust Fund, I think I said that right? That's an actual trust fund, right?
That is, that's a trust fund.
Okay, so, just like I said about the Melon Park Tennis Bubble Trust Fund, that's just housed in, I think, DPW or Parks and Rec? Is it in Parks?
Melon Park Trust Fund is housed in Parks and Rec.
So, and then, so whenever, like, there was a tear in the bubble or something like that, you get, you just get to draw down funds?
Well, yes, we pull from...
Basically, they write a check from that trust fund.
We would pay for anything related to that Melon Tennis facility from the trust fund, unless it was going to be a capital...
I don't remember those like coming before us, and say, you know, you need 100 bucks from it or something. That doesn't come here to this table.
I don't, I can't speak to that process. Once those, those invoices get processed through the cash management office and in the controller's office to approve payment, I'm not sure how those trust fund things hit Council.
Director Paulus?
If, if there were, if there were contracts associated with that funding source, it would have come through Council, but as far as like actual invoice being paid, they may be part of the, the invoice packet that you all see on a weekly basis, just like any other funding source.
And similarly, so this one is structured the same way?
Correct.
So, what programming costs you have, like, what do we include under programming costs? Popcorn? Popcorn machine at Schenley?
There's a contract with a vendor at the Schenley Ice Rink, there may be specific programs.
Mascot Day or Mascot Skate or something like that? Like the kind of promotions for it, or even paying the mascot characters or whatever it is?
That's correct.
Okay, so those kinds of things would come out of here, and again, I just want to just point this out, because I know the public is noticing things that have both parks and trust fund associated with it, that the ones that we currently have are really, once we kind of approve their structure and they go away, it's really an administrative oversight.
Yeah, it's operational administrative support for that entity, for that asset, for the people that may be tied to it, no different than a RAD trust fund or any of the other ones, so. Our department just happens to have several of them.
Okay, very good, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill passes.
Thank you very much.
That takes us to our invoices.
I need a motion to approve the invoices.
Second.
Now, we're actually going to take the invoices in parts today, because a, a number of members need to make abstentions, so can I have a motion to just approve the city council invoices?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions?
Councilwoman Burgess?
I'm not sure where I'm supposed to, I suppose abstain, but I'm not sure which one's abstain. Is this one?
Just on this one.
Abstain.
Two abstentions. City Council invoices are passed. I now want to take the invoices just for the Law Department, so can I have a motion to just approve the invoices for the Law Department?
Motion to approve.
I'll move.
Second.
All those in favor?
I guess I am.
Abstain.
I've never done this before.
Two, two abstentions. Now, I need a motion to approve all remaining invoices.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Invoices are approved.
I don't know.
You did it.
We do have P-cards in before us, so I need a motion to approve the P-cards. Need a second?
Okay.
Any discussion on the P-cards? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, P-cards are approved. That moves us to the Public Safety Committee, chaired by Mr. O'Connor, Bill 144.
Bill 144, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Safety to Enter on Behalf of the City into an Agreement for the Bucks County Community College for Hazardous Materials, Safety Officer Training, and Certification Services at a Sum Not to Exceed $9,000.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill passes. Bill 145?
Uh, excuse me, sorry, uh, Mr. Chair, the council member who sponsored these two bills would like to read 146 first.
Okay.
And then go back. And then go back.
So Bill 146?
146.
Bill 146, ordinance supplementing ordinance of number 36 relative to the Pittsburgh City Code at Title VI, Conduct Article III Dogs, Cats, and Other Animals, Chapter 636 Wild Animals, Section 63606, prohibiting the capture and harm of any wild birds, to prohibit the sale of native and disingenuous birds, to eliminate any permit or license allowing individuals to trap wild birds, and to completely prohibit trapping wild birds other than by properly qualified and trained employees of the Pittsburgh Bureau of Animal Control and Care when the wild bird is injured, resides within a building, or poses an imminent risk of property damage or physical harm.
Motion to approve.
To approve. Second. Very brief discussion if I may, we distributed a white page to all members about four or five days ago that explained what we were attempting to do just to clean up some of the definitions in the ordinance. There doesn't seem to be any questions around the wild bird trapping amendment, and so I wish to put that forward, and then when we read the second bill, there might be some questions that I'd like to answer for the council members.
Thank you, any other conversation, Councilwoman?
No, the second one, I'm sorry.
You want the second one, okay. Any further conversations for Bill 146? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill 146 is passed, we'll now read Bill 145.
Bill 145, ordinance amending ordinance number 36, amending and supplementing the Pittsburgh Code Title VI, Conduct Article III Dogs, Cats, and Other Animals by repealing Chapter 639 Crocodilian and Venomous Snakes in its entirety and adding a new Chapter 639 Crocodiles Species and Red-Eared Sliders, prohibiting the keeping, sale, exchange, adoption, exchange, or transfer of such animals in the city of Pittsburgh.
Motion to approve discussion.
Second.
I'll yield to the sponsor.
Okay, thank you very much. So again, there's a white paper on this that breaks down what it is we were attempting to do. I know Councilwoman, or Council President Cale Smith had a question about the the ordinance as it relates to turtles. I would just reference you to the top of the second page there. It is a very specific kind of turtle, which is known as a red-eared slider, which has a lifespan of 50 to 90 years and they can be very aggressive. They require tanks from anywhere from 20 to 75 gallons, and they put undue burden on our animal shelters if and when they are released into the wild and then humane animal rescue has to assume responsibility for these and try to 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 place. So I hope that will answer your question. The other questions came about yesterday that were driven by members of the zoo, particularly their executive director. I was not privy to those conversations, I was only contacted about some reservations they may have after they had reached every other council member and not the sponsor of the bill. It was Councilman O'Connor who called me to say that the zoo had been calling them, him, and I asked him to have the zoo call me, which they did yesterday at 4:30, but I've not had a chance to respond. So I think what the reservation that this is, I know what the reservation that the zoo has around the reptile ordinance is that it speaks to accredited organizations being able to handle, maintain, keep, and contain reptiles. So the accreditation that the ordinance requires is the association of zoos and aquariums, which the zoo was a member for the last 29 years. It was the executive director that opted out of the legal requirement via our lease with, the zoo's lease with the city, that we must maintain that accreditation. And so I shared with members a report that came out in the Post Gazette just recently on February 21 that speaks to the fact that the zoo is indeed in violation of their lease with the city, that this accreditation is indeed required. It was dropped, I think, back in 2017 if I remember correctly. There were some negotiations with the city law department and the mayor's office, those fell apart and nothing has been settled. So my my reservation about removing any level of accreditation is that we actually enable our zoo to bypass a mandatory accreditation via the lease they have with the city. It's a legal and contractual obligation that they have. Having said that, the ordinance also calls for grandfathering in, so any reptiles that are owned and maintained by the zoo at this time are grandfathered in and are covered under this ordinance, but that would restrict, at least is my understanding, would restrict them having any other reptiles come in until they came into compliance. So whatever the pleasure of the body is, we can pass this today. I've not had a chance to sit down and speak with Barbara, or we can hold for one week while I speak with Barbara, but I I won't relinquish our legal obligation to have the zoo be in compliance with the lease that they have signed with the city. And with that, I'll turn it over to anything else members may have. Councilwoman Smith and Councilwoman Gross.
So I would ask that we hold it for at least a week until maybe we can sit down and talk with the law department and the zoo, and I want to make sure I say this very clearly, although we all introduce our own legislation and we have people that contact all of us, I try to respect the council member who introduced that legislation, and I would appreciate if the zoo would have contacted you earlier on and respected the fact that you are the council member who put this, who introduced this. And so I don't like to disrespect any council members when they're when they're working on things, but at the same time, I have a very soft spot for the zoo, I mean, it's such an asset to the city of Pittsburgh, and I think that there's going to be some way that we sit down and work together with them to straighten this out, the accreditation, this legislation, and any further concerns that there might be between us. So with that, I would like to at least request that you would hold it for one week and and you have those conversations with the zoo.
I'll go second round.
Thank you. So I agree, I, just for full disclosure, of course, the zoo is entirely in District 7, and I sit on the board of the zoo, and there's definitely been a longstanding discussion about the changing industry and the relevance of different accreditations, of which I'm not an expert, but I know there are many different opinions about accreditation, so I support a one-week hold, and clearly there's multi-level issues here and not just the concern about reptiles, I think. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Schlossberger.
Thank you. I echo what Council President Cale Smith said about, you know, a certain amount of respect for the for the sponsor of any bill, that's who any any concern should be directed to first, not last. That said, I want to put this conversation about the accreditation aside for just a second because one concern that was brought to me by the zoo was that zoo leadership was that this could potentially, you know, recognizing that that existing reptiles that are at the zoo, that this would be grandfathered in, fine, but going forward, it sounds as if, and I'm not any expert at this, but animal care control sometimes works with the zoo to house these types of reptiles that are perhaps confiscated from houses that are that are holding them illegally. So I wouldn't want to put that in jeopardy either, and I'd like to get some answers also from animal care and control as to what kind of relationship exists there and what needs to be considered here.
Any further discussion, Councilman Burgess?
So the people here from the zoo, are you here? Why don't you come forward and talk to us and tell us what your concerns are, that way we won't have to, we're all here, and say them on camera, so we'll have a sense of what your concerns are so we can address them ongoingly, I think that makes sense. So if you would come forward, please come to-
People come to take a seat, and before you speak, please tell us your name and who you're representing, who you are.
I'm Dr. Barbara Baker, I'm president and CEO of the Pittsburgh Zoo and PPG Aquarium, a position I've been humbled to be able to hold for 30 years.
My name's Henry Casperzik, curator of Reptiles and Kids Kingdom. I've been at the zoo for 40 years, a city resident.
Hi, Dr. Ginger Sturgeon, I'm a resident in Morningside, and I am the director of animal health, been with the zoo for 10 years.
Welcome, so we've have heard at the table that you have some concerns about the legislation, and so I remember that we had some similar, not the zoo, I think it was circuses before, about the taking care of elephants, I remember having this conversation maybe 16 years ago. So if you would please sort of tell us what your concerns are so that we can, over the week we're going to probably hold this, we can have further conversations, but give us a sense, those of us who won't be in that conversations, what your concerns are.
Well, our main concern is that the zoo is not exempt in the legislation. So that, in the original legislation, the zoo was exempt, when the when the amendment occurred this time, the zoo was not exempt. So we felt that that was a simple fix that the zoo should be exempt in this bill. In addition, we help animal control, Henry especially, and his team have 90 years of experience in working with reptiles, and so reptiles and crocodiles, and so anytime we have, you know, folks that, within the animal control department here with the city of Pittsburgh, we're very happy to work cooperatively with them.
Yeah, as as mentioned, we've worked closely with animal control, and if there's a problem, there's a fireman responding to a house, there's an alligator, a crocodile in there, or if there's the police are going in and raiding somebody who is dealing drugs, we often go and assist. That being said, we'll no longer be able to do this. More importantly to me is, we participate in conservation programs, we will be unable to move animals in for conservation programs, which is disheartening. I personally feel that, Councilman, you should have contacted us, we have a tremendous amount of experience with crocodiles. We've worked closely with so many people and never has that come up to us, again, 90 years' experience between three people, I feel we are the experts, and just as you would like to be consulted, I feel that we should be consulted as well.
Anything else? So my understanding is that if you, if we exempt you from this legislation, that will take care of your concerns.
Yes, sir.
Right, thank you very much, that's that's it for me.
Any further discussion, first round? Seeing none, Councilman Kraus?
Right, so my reservation around an exemption, which Darlene Harris, Councilwoman Harris, would have assumed granted in the first round, is that it flies in the face of your legal obligation to come into accreditation through the Association of Zoos and Aquariums, which you were a member of for 29 years, but under your leadership, you decided to no longer seek that accreditation, and you're legally bound by your lease that runs through 2022 with the city of Pittsburgh to have that accreditation. This is not some backdoor or side door attempt to bring you into accreditation, but you're asking me as a legislator to flaunt your obligation to the law as we write law because you don't want to come under the accreditation that you are required to do by law with your lease with the city. I don't, I can't do that.
Okay, let me explain a little bit further on that and the lease issue. When we entered into the lease in 1993, '94, AZA, which is the American Association of Zoos and Aquariums, was the only game in town, so they were the only zoo accrediting body at that time. Since that time, there've been a number of other accrediting bodies, in our case, what we believe better accrediting bodies because they're third-party independent accrediting bodies instead of a peer review that AZA offers. So we're currently accredited by the American Humane Association's Humane Conservation Program, which is a global certification program, a third-party independent certification program. We're also accredited by the Alliance for Marine Mammal Parks and Aquariums, a very strenuous accreditation process, and we're also accredited by the Zoological Association of America. So when we met with the legal department at the city and we expressed what we are doing in regards to accreditation, they felt, and we felt, that we were meeting the intent of the language. Sorry, I've had a problem with throat all day. We were meeting the intent of the language, and the intent of the language at the time the contract, the lease was done, was that we be accredited in some form. So that that's why the issue has not become an issue in five years with the city or the zoo, because we believe we meet the the intent of the language.
So but as your legal obligation remains today, you are under contract to meet that accreditation, so the issue becomes renegotiate your contract, when that happens, this will no longer be valid, but you're asking me to turn a blind eye to your legal obligation to be accredited according to the lease you signed. I don't want to be all Judge Judy here, but she would say exactly the same thing, you signed the contract, you agreed to the obligation, just because you have gone and sought other accreditations, which I thank you for and admire you for doing, you're still legally bound to require, under your requirement, to have the Association of Zoos and Aquariums accreditation. I'm in a rock and a hard place here. I wish to protect the reptiles that the ordinance here does protect. We had disagreements about the language that the councilwoman had used in keeping an animal trapped, encaged, and contained for the the longevity of its life, which I think is completely and totally inhumane, which is the heart and soul of why we want to change this legislation. I didn't negotiate your contract, you negotiated, and I don't wish to get mired down in that, and I wish it wasn't a part of it, but I'm bound to do that. You have to, you have to come into accreditation, and if not renegotiate your contract, then this will be null and void.
Are you going to finish, Councilwoman Smith?
I would just say that, look, we love the zoo, you've been amazing for the city of Pittsburgh, my daughter's a member of the zoo, I mean, there's just a lot of things that every, I think my kids have been going there, I've been going there, there's not enough nice things, good things that we can say. I think that we're going to work towards this exemption, but I think that Councilman Kraus has some serious concerns that we need to have addressed, and I think it's just a matter of talking, maybe talking to the law department and working through some of this stuff, because, I mean, it sounds like you have tremendous accreditation, just not in the one that's in your lease, am I, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so it sounds like maybe the lease needs, you know, some amending or something, I'm going to defer that to Councilman Lavelle, because he's the chair of finance and law, so I'm sure he and Councilwoman Gross can work on that with Councilman Kraus, but I do want to say that when you made the comment that he should have came to you, the way that it works here is there's a million people that could have an opinion on your legislation, so when somebody has a concern, you contact, so for the public in general, when someone has a concern about legislation that any one of us introduce, out of respect for our colleagues, we ask that you contact our colleague, the person who introduced or sponsored the bill. And so for that, I would just say, you know, I would like to see my colleague respected as well, because I know he's doing this out of the goodness of his heart and because he cares, but I also know that the zoo does tremendous work, and I want to make sure that we're working this out. There's no reason for us to be at odds here. I think that we can all get to someplace where we're taking care of his concerns and making sure that we're addressing the exemption that you request.
Yeah, and just to clear the record, not to be argumentative at all, but I did personally call Councilman Kraus's office yesterday three times.
At 4:30 yesterday afternoon, we have a record of it, it's a digital world we live in, and the only reason you call me is the councilman called me while I was in transit from Washington State to say that you were calling the floor and speaking to members, and he called you and said, call me, and you called me at 4:30.
With all due respect, I'm going to motion to hold one week. Is there a second?
Second.
I motion to hold one week.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you for being here.
Any opposed? Bill is held one week.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you guys.
We tried to work this out. You're legally bound.
That takes us to Public Works Committee chaired by Councilman Coghill, supplemental paper 160.
Bill 160, resolution, amending resolution number 763, which is taking, appropriating, and condemning by the city for road rate purposes certain property in the 26th Ward owned by Sessi Portuguese and known as 45 Semisir Street to amend the chargeable account to reflect the 2020 operating budget.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, bill passes. Bill 139?
Bill 139, resolution, amending resolution 15, which providing for a contract or agreement for the planning, design, repairs, maintenance improvements, emergency operations, and/or the purchase of materials, equipment, and supplies in connection with the production of the Oakland Transportation Study and associated projects to provide for a specific payee and authorize entering into contract for the Oakland Transportation Study.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill passes, Bill 140?
Bill 140, resolution, amending resolution 336, providing for a contract in connection with the production of the Hill District Mobility Network and Parking Management Plan and associated projects to provide for a specific payee and authorize entering into contract for the Hill District Transportation Study.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any conversation?
Just one small one I note, yes, if you don't mind?
Sure, we are looking to, with the Lower Hill District coming online, with the intent to redevelop Center Avenue as a commercial corridor, with the New Granada Theater and others needing parking, we're doing a transportation study to try to figure out, how does all the new development work? How do we, how does it relate to parking? Do we need additional parking? Should we be encouraging more public transportation? We're trying to figure out how all this aligns as we begin to redevelop the neighborhood.
So I am encouraged by the efforts, but I will also say that I did a similar thing with the Strip District about two years ago when we finally got the results of the study, and I was concerned, and you probably saw in the news a little bit, the uproar that it caused amongst the building owners and merchants in the Strip District, so just a word of caution that make sure that the proposal and the firm that you use give equal weight to the non-car, like, it's a delicate balance, right, between just having a parking study, which is just going to be like how to house lots of cars, and then, but then not distressing people who are concerned about making sure people can get to their businesses, et cetera, et cetera, so.
Yeah, so this is not just a parking study. I want to be clear about that. This is truly a transportation study to figure out what is the best methods to get in and out of the neighborhood.
Right.
And looking at weighing public transportation versus parking, BRT, if and when that ever comes online, how does that play into all of this, those, trying to figure all of that out.
Wonderful, best of luck.
Can I chime in too, please? Thank you, I just, I, the councilwoman and I were separated at birth on this, on this topic, and and I too just would encourage as broad a conversation of mobility in all of its facets that we can possibly have in that, we're not wedding ourselves to parking structures that I'm genuinely afraid are going to be obsolete in a matter of years, because as new generations are coming online, they're not looking to 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 own cars, let alone find places to park them, and I I don't want to see us building warehouses that will in 10 years not be serving a purpose. So I'm happy to support, I just, I just have to chime in that I wish to see it in all all facets of mobility.
Thank you, I just, some of the same concerns, but I just want to say that, you know, one of my things with DOMI is the 2070 plan, and a lot of the input that they're getting are from a lot of young people who, you know, generally would like- from a lot of young people who, you know, generally would like to see us, you know, carless in the City of Pittsburgh in a lot of places. And I think there's a lot of benefit to that, right? But I also think we're talking about 2070 when they'll be our age and then a car might be a necessity for them. So, I just want people to think, you know, we plan for the future, but we don't really plan about getting older. I mean, I bought my house years ago, not thinking that I'd have so many steps, so many floors, you know, levels to the house. And, you know, now I'm thinking, I'm older, I'm thinking, boy, I should have bought a ranch. So, I just to keep that in mind, I just want to make sure people think about the future. But I also have a concern, as Councilwoman Lavelle knows, my family, and I mentioned this yesterday, grew up on Fifth and Robinson, the bottom of Fifth and Robinson Street. And it's where I was raised. And there was a time where there was a bus stop at the bottom of Fifth and Robinson. And when they built the homes or the apartments for the student housing down the street, they moved the bus stop. So, the people from Robinson Street that have been, have living there forever, now have to catch a bus, walk further, even though they're elderly. Now, they have to walk further down. And I did ask the county exec once before to look at, and I know that he did drive through there with the Director of Port Authority. And I think I talked to you about it back then. It was a long time ago. But for me, I don't want to forget that the people that are living in the area. So, I mean, it's great to bring people in and out. I want to make sure that we're also not forgetting the people that have lived there for, for years. And, you know, because I've seen that happen once with the Hill District. So, we don't, and I know you, you're keenly aware and that you've done an amazing job up there. So, you'll make sure that that's, that's something that we're not forgetting again. But it's just a concern.
Any further, any further discussion for first round? Seeing none, second round? Councilwoman Gross?
Just one addition. Again, the Strip District used to be empty warehouses and really a lot of undeveloped land. And some of us might still have that Strip District in our minds eye. But as most of you have put in my car and driven through the Strip District, that is no longer true. There used to be no structured parking, parking garages in the Strip. There, I'm pretty sure, and you can fact check me on this, that study that I did fund, there are 7,000 parking garage spots in the Strip District today. It's in just like six or seven short years. There are so many new cars buzzing around all the streets that never used to be on the streets. We're having people being struck and killed by cars during the day.
There probably aren't many people that want cars.
That many cars were induced in those developments. So, for example, when you see the giant, giant apartment structures on the riverfront, there's 400, you know, private parking spaces in garages inside that apartment building. When you see the office buildings, there are decks of parking underneath. So, there, every single parcel has hundreds and hundreds of structure. Those are $30,000, $35,000 a spot to build. So, we're looking at something like, I'm just going to do some like crazy math in my head, like $40 million of car housing was built in the last six or seven years. That could have been people housing. So, there's, there's many, there's a multifaceted cost to what we choose to build or not to build. So, I'll leave the lecture for another day. Just again, a word of caution.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Any further conversation? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill passes. Enter Governmental Affairs Committee chaired by Councilwoman Gross. Deferred Paper, Bill 19.
Bill 19, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewer Facilities Plan for the District 15 Beta Development at 1465 Smallman Street.
Motion to approve a discussion?
Is that good?
Second. Could you come up, please? I didn't realize you were here today. Because we've been deferring this paper because the project wasn't all the way through its planning approvals, which I'm pretty sure it still is not. But introduce yourself. Tell us your name and title.
I'm Rob Garrus. I'm a civil engineer for Langen Engineering. We're the civil engineer on the District 15 beta project.
So, as I mentioned, I had been deferring the paper because it wasn't through all its other planning approvals. Are you aware whether or not the project is through its other planning approvals?
It was going through the foundation permitting.
Uh huh. And it's not through it yet?
Not aware of that yet.
Right. Right. So, again, just performance, since I've been here for the six years, it was, we would have the planning modules last, I mean, the sewer modules last. Maybe we should, maybe we shouldn't. Maybe we should actually be voting on sewer modules before other permits are granted. Right? But typically, we've been doing them last, which is why I have been delaying. I'm sorry that I, my office didn't notify me that you were coming in today.
Well, truth be told, we haven't had a whole lot of notification about this in general.
So, the Clerk's Office is in charge of kind of communicating on the sewer modules. Maybe we'll offline talk about how those are. So, I'll give you a chance to tell a little bit about the project today, but I'm not sure that I'm going to be comfortable asking members to vote on it until we have other information. But give, just give us a brief overview since we've got you here.
Yeah, understood. So, it's across the street from the Federal Cold Storage Building and Veterans Bridge.
The Woolies Fish Building.
Thank you. It's the existing, there's a parking lot there as existing. The plan is to put up a six-story structure, about 190,000 square feet of office space, and some structured parking on the ground floors for that office space as well. Ground floors-
How many, to assume we are on the subject, how many parking spaces?
300 or so.
300. And there are 900 spaces proposed for across the street. And there are 300 spaces next door. And there are another 600 spaces, almost finished with construction, just catty corner. So, again, that's something like 1,500 spaces in just four parcels that are right next to each other, just to frame the discussion.
It is an existing parking lot as well. And then in addition to that parking and office structure, there is first floor retail and research and development planned.
Okay. So, I'm going to give members a little more context. So, if you're leaving the Hill Street Center and you're driving up Smallman towards the produce terminal and you're approaching the 16th Street Bridge, you'll notice that on your left is the brand new Facebook building where this is, and this is all on the Buncher SP District. So, everything off to your left, which is 45 acres that the Buncher Company has owned since 1972 and has been used for mostly surface parking, but now it has the very, very large apartment buildings on the river's edge and the new townhouses behind the produce terminal. And then they put up on spec, a, this company, RDC, Decloa, put up a building on spec for 100,000 square feet right up against the 16th Street Bridge before it. And Facebook took the whole thing. That was the opening that happened last week. And so, the same developer, it's RDC?
Yes.
Again, these are on ground leases. So, Buncher still owns the property underneath. But RDC is building now a 200,000 square foot building right next to the 100,000 square foot Facebook building. And then across the street is the Woolies Cold Storage, which is to be demolished. And that's the proposal that's been in the paper for an additional 500,000 square feet of office with another 900 parking spaces. So, there's literally nearly a million square feet of new office space in the, on the 1,500 block before the 16th Street Bridge, which is where like Lydia's, right after you pass Lydia's restaurant. So, that's the framing of it. So, this is the sewer module.
Yes.
It's all new sewer.
Yeah.
And it'll be running, they'll overflow directly to the river, right?
No, the stormlines go into the PUSA sewer lines.
But we just, PUSA just spent like $20 million relaying that brand new sewer under this, under Smallman in front of the produce terminal.
The one at the 16th Street?
Yeah, for the produce terminal McCaffrey project. Right? So, I'm assuming that's the one you'll tap into.
There's, my understanding is that the stormline goes into the PUSA sewer system. So, as far as actually-
Maybe we'll ask about that. Again, we don't need to do it today, but I'll take another look at your plan. I wasn't, I was just expecting to hold it again. So, I'll just hold it one week so we can figure out where you guys are, if you actually have all your other planning permits. And I'll just motion for a one-week hold. We motion for a hold one week. Oh, I'm sorry. Do you have more questions?
No, no, we were having a sidebar, so I missed it.
We, we motioned to second it for a one-week hold.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
So, maybe see you next week.
Okay. See you next week.
Why don't you give me your phone number?
Bill 109?
Bill 109, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewer Facilities Plan for the Town Homes on Fifth Avenue, project located on tax map 5127, 5129, 5131, 5133, and 35 Fifth Avenue.
Motion to hold three weeks?
Three weeks? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Bill is held three weeks. New papers, Bill 141?
Bill 141, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewer Facilities Plan for the 2926 Smallman Street Land Development Project located at 2920 and 2930 Smallman Street.
Do we have someone here in the audience for this? Okay. So, I'm going to motion to approve a discussion. It might be a very similar discussion.
Second.
This might be a very similar session. Come on up and give us your name. So, you're familiar with my question. So, you were probably thinking about your, this project as well. I was not notified that this project as well is all through its planning permits. So, if you just want to introduce yourself and your firm and give us a little bit of framing about this one too. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. So, Maureen Golon with PVE. We're the Civil and Environmental's on 2926 Smallman. And we just did 2908 Smallman, which is right next door. It is existing CNG station right now. And then the developer is proposing to demolish that. And then we're going to build a seven-story, first floor is a restaurant. The remaining stories are apartments. And right now, we are in our second revision with city planning for our CDAP review. We're going for an art, art points, because we're going above height. And so, we're in talks. No one's ever done the art points before. So, we're kind of in a holding pattern, trying to figure out how to do that. And so, then now we're up for sewage facilities planning module.
Great. Okay. So, point A for councilmembers, not all the way through the planning permitting stages yet. So, the, the art points, if you'll remember, that we had these kind of incentives tables that went along with the riverfront zoning so that you could get benefits if you, you know, gave some trade-offs in that table of benefits. And then secondly, you'll notice that the current compressed natural gas station in the Strip is going to be demolished.
It's in the process, yes.
And this building will be built on that site. So, is that the compressed natural gas station that our facilities was intending to put the $400,000 piece of equipment on? I don't know. I don't know the answer to that. It is my district. I will be asking DPW about this. And I'll ask Councilman Coghill, who chairs DPW, for his support there. Because this seven-story building is owned by these people, I mean, these people are demolishing the compressed natural gas site in the Strip District and building a seven-story building on it. And they're in the middle of their permitting for it.
29th Street.
Okay. So, that's the one Bobby that you drive by. So, so there's a lot of questions here. And just since we're on the topic, how many parking spaces do you know are proposed for this?
It's 54.
Another 54, which is very small comparatively.
And we're taking 15 from 2908 Smallman.
Right. So, you're like shared parking?
Yeah.
That's just very helpful. Right. And so, again, the 29th block, if you go on Railroad Street, and I will always offer to put anyone in my car or go in your car and take you on a tour of the Strip in Lawrenceville, because as Councilman Coghill says, it like changes almost every day, right? It was jokes, you drive up one way and you come back and there's a new building. So, the 20, the upper Strip District is under all intense development pressure right now up against the 31st Street Bridge. So, you think there's a lot going on in the lower Strip District, there's a lot going on in the upper Strip District as well. And it's pretty phenomenal just how many parcels under, are being developed concurrently. So, again, I'm going to motion to hold just one week until we can figure out. And then we can stay in touch. You can give me your contact information so we can stay in touch more directly. But then I'll also be talking after the session to Madam Clerk to make sure I thought you guys were point on these things, but we'll figure out who's supposed to be point.
Benjamin Smith in legal.
All right. So, we'll, we'll figure out how to stay in better contact so that it's not confusing which week you're supposed to be here. Okay. I appreciate your time. Motion to hold one week?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Bill is held one week. That takes us to the end of our agenda. Is there any conversation from members who are making their meeting announcements? Seeing none. We do have a couple of meeting announcements this afternoon with sessions at 1:30 and 2:15. Council will hold a briefing on energy efficiency upgrades tomorrow, Thursday, March 5th at 6:00 p.m. here in chambers. Council will hold a cable cast public hearing on Bills 57 and 91 as it relates to the Pittsburgh Parks Trust Fund and the village increase. Then next Monday, next Wednesday, excuse me, March 11th with sessions at 1:00 and 1:30, council will hold a briefing on pending OMB legislation, Bills 120 and 121. All members are present. Without a need to motion to approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting.
I'm over.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.